Hey Naomi, how are you?
I'm good, thank you. So are you having any more issues?
I think you're still on mute.
No. Can you hear me now?
Not yet.
Okay, hold on, wait. Can you hear me now?
I think you're still on mute. It looks like it's on Naomi, it looks like your mute button's still on.
Okay, how about now? Mary, can you hear me?
Yes, I can, very well.
Jim, can you hear me?
I don't think so, he doesn't appear to be. Could he be muted?
No, I can hear him.
Oh. I don't hear him.
There we go.
Now there you go, I hear you.
It was, it was me Naomi, I had my playback device off.
Not a problem. So who's recording? Because the recording button is on.
I don't know, when I, when I clicked on it, it came up and just said this is being recorded, so I think it automatically did it.
Usually somebody has to start it, and it was on.
Yeah, that's bizarre.
It was on an hour ago because I thought this meeting started at six, so I got here early and it was already recording.
Oh, was it really? Oh wow. Maybe it's leftover from the meeting before.
Who takes the notes for the Conservation Committee?
Used to be Julie, but she's not, has resigned, so I'm not sure. I wasn't at last month's meeting, so I don't know.
I think Elizabeth's doing it now.
Okay.
I can tell you in just a second, for sure. No, it's Kathleen, Kathleen's doing it.
Okay. Hi Mike.
Hi Mike.
Hey Mike. Long day already, huh?
I just look forward to the snow tomorrow.
Oh yeah, one more.
Well, you don't have to worry about going out plowing.
I mean, yesterday I was in my beehives, tomorrow it's gonna snow.
Yeah, it's crazy, huh?
I got two out of three of them get through, cut through the winter, so. It's not too bad.
Of the hives?
Yeah.
Four minutes.
We never seen the start on time.
You gonna have a quorum, Mike?
I hoping so, I'm not 100% sure it was gonna show up. I think it was supposed to be a presentation on Tri-Town Trail grant they just got, I'm not sure if they're going to be here. Was also possibly presentation concerning Whitehall. You know, they took a walk up there and did a survey of it.
Nice article in the day about Whitehall.
Are you the one that gave most of that information?
I gave some of it, and I think it's, it's, there's, there's kind of not a mistake, but I walked it with Sidney Hall and a number of the committee that he appointed to take care of the property. Now, most of them were his age, so they were all rather old. And he, at that time, was kind of feeble, not in mind, but he was having difficulty walking. So there were two people on each side kind of holding him. And Don Greasy was there that day, and he said, "And I don't want any ball fields." He saw John Greasy, no ball field. But the thing that's interesting about the rock, he's walking and he's having difficulty, and somebody said, "Would you like to sit down?" So he said, "Okay," and they've said, "Oh, there's a rock over there you can sit on." And somebody said, "Oh no, that's too hard." And he said, "I never sat on a rock that wasn't hard." But it was, it was kind of a very nice day, but I think all of those people who accompanied him at the time, they're probably all dead. They were his, you know, contemporaries. But he was, he was very passionate about what he wanted and what he didn't want, but he didn't want ball fields.
We've managed that so far.
Hi Dave. Hi Sarah.
Hi and bye.
Hello.
Hi and bye.
In two minutes.
At least a lot of quorum. There's Amy.
Hi.
Hey Amy.
Leaving the video off tonight, I hope you guys don't mind.
Hi Carmen.
All righty. It's 6:46, we do have a quorum, sufficient people for quorum, so I'm gonna call, call the order, the meeting to order. Our secretary will not be here this evening, is there anyone who wants to take minutes? If. If not, I will put something together. All righty, roll call, we have Jim, myself, Mike, Naomi, Mary, Jessica, Dave, Jessica Cobb, Jessica Buehl, and Calm. All righty, it's a roll call. Have we had an opportunity to review meeting, the minutes from my last meeting? Is everyone, has anyone found any corrections, additions, substitutions? None? All righty. And I'd like to make a motion that we accept the minutes as written, have a second?
I'll second.
All righty. All in favor accepting the minutes as written?
Hi.
All righty. Correspondences, I only have one this month, it's from the Connecticut Land Conservation Council. And what it is, is they're thanking us for a membership contribution that we made to them. And, you know, just, they're just saying that they've received it, and it's a thank, thank you to all of us for the donation, and that's the only one I have. All righty. Public comments. Yes, Jessica?
Hi, sorry. I don't know why I'm apologizing, anyway. Um, my name's Jessica, and I have started the Pollinator Pathway Program in Ledger. So I created a sweet little Facebook page, it has like 150 followers already, which is pretty cool. And so the goal of the Pollinator Pathway Program is to plant more native plants, reduce invasive plants, and reduce the use of pesticides in our communities, so that we have a healthier planet for more pollinators and all that good stuff. And I think that our missions align very closely. Um, and from what I had heard in the conversation with maybe Jessica Cobb, maybe Carmen, not sure, bad memory, was that, um, at some point, there was a discussion about doing an event to remove invasive plants on certain town properties. And I would love to work together to coordinate an invasive plant removal event, I think that that would be really cool. Or to coordinate planting native plants in town conservation areas, like things like that. So, just something that I'd love to work together on in the future. I did apply to be on this commission, so that helps, I don't know. But it's just some interesting stuff that I'm working on, and I think that we can work together and make the town a little bit better, so.
Yes, we have plenty of invasives.
We do.
Yes.
And once you notice them, they're everywhere, you can't not notice them anymore.
No, no. I, I think, yeah, invasive. You, you people would be able to identify invasives and before they leaf out, wouldn't you? Because I can.
I'm not great at it yet, but I can learn and work better at it, so.
I would love to see, you know, a group of people come and start helping us eradicate the invasives. You know, just even just cutting back to, you know, stunt them, so we can start, you know, keep them from getting, spreading. I do have, the Conservation Commission does have weed wrenches, if you're familiar with those. Yanking them right out of the ground, you know, there is, you know, different methods. We'd be very, very happy to have help.
Okay. So is this something that I should reach out when I have like an idea for a location and a date? And we can kind of publish together and try to get, okay, perfect. So I will work on finding locations and dates. I did already talk a little bit with the town about some of, some town properties that I've looked at, that I just have to make sure they're not wetlands, and that we don't have to get like permits, and they're like, "But you're removing invasive plants." But it's still like, uh, don't wanna disturb anything and mess anything up big time. So, even though I don't think removing invasives disturbs a wetland. But, just to make sure that we're all in good graces with the town and not getting like yelled at, so.
No, removing, I don't believe removing invasives around wetlands is, is it, is any concern, because you're not disturbing, you're not interrupting with the flow, you're not, etc.
We're not cutting down trees or anything crazy, it's just removing bad plants, perfect.
The only thing that they would, that you would have to watch out for is using pesticides around it. Yes, there's certain requirements. I have a supervisory pesticide license, so I'm familiar with what can and can't be done, and, you know, what products you can and can't use, so. I don't, that's not gonna be a problem.
And would you or this commission be able to suggest any places to start where we should go as our first choices? I don't know.
Whitehall?
Okay, Jessica's like.
This is a woman that could tell you exactly where they are.
Pretty sure she's about to in about six minutes.
Yes, Whitehall is, would be at the top of our list.
Okay, so yeah, we can definitely organize something within the next month. Or six weeks or so to get an event out there. Because the Pollinator Pathway is so new, it has a lot of attention right now, and I'd like to keep the ball rolling with it. Yeah, so. Should be fun. If you haven't liked it on Facebook, follow it, it's gonna be cool, we're gonna do good things. So, and I'd love if anyone wants to help run it, so, side note, thanks. All right, I'm done, thank you.
Thank you. All righty, any other comments, public? Jessica?
Well, did my, yeah, did my video freeze, okay. Um, I do have a presentation that I, I can do tonight, that I've prepared for tonight, do you want me to do it in public comments? Or do you want me to wait till? There's an agenda item for the, I don't have it in front of me, environmental.
Is it possible we could put it on next month's agenda? Is it an agenda item? Also, perhaps next month, we may have more of the members of the commission. So, because we're missing about three or so, three or four now. So perhaps we would have a larger audience. If that's all right with you. If you're prepared this evening. I mean, this is recorded, so if anybody wanted to see it again.
Yeah, um, me being prepared is like, you know, I get to about 85% and I'm good. So, you know, I can present tonight, or I can wait till next month, but I thought if looking at the invasive species calendars and when is a good time to remove plants, March is like the beginning, so I, you know. So I don't know if it would be valuable for me to do it tonight or wait till next month.
If this is the beginning of the calendar year for this, then we can start this evening.
Okay, would you like me to wait until the later agenda item? Or there's a Whitehall environmental assessment on the.
What we can do is we can put it on the next agenda item, which is informational items.
Okay.
We can put it under that, we can discuss it there.
Okay, great.
All right. And that's the next item, informational items, so you give the presentation now.
Okay, can I share my screen? Okay, let me make sure I have this up. Of course, Zoom. Let's see. Can you see my PowerPoint? Okay. All right, so, for those of you who don't know me, my name is Jessica Cobb. I finished up a geosciences with a concentration in GIS degree at the end of December last year, and part of my final project was creating a research project. And and, so I chose invasive species in in Ledger Parks. Okay, so the purpose that I was given or the, the prompt that we were given for our final project was to create a research project that will address a practical and existing real world problem in the field of geosciences. So if you don't know what geosciences is, it's kind of, it's kind of like combining environmental science and geography and a little bit of geology too, but it's less focused on physical sciences, but kind of taking the human and human interaction and social aspects into the sciences field. So, um, what I did with that was I thought of what would be valuable to Ledger and what interested me. And one of the things that happened when I moved here was I looked at my backyard and it was covered with, with Oriental, Oriental bittersweet. And they were just choking out the trees, and it hurt my heart, and I cut them all down, cut the bittersweet down. And so I, it kind of spurred an interest in finding invasive plant species in my yard and in my neighborhood, and like Jessica said just a few minutes ago, once you see one, you see it everywhere. And, and so it was kind of an interest of mine for the last couple of years, so I thought, what better way to just put it in, make a research project around it? What was great was that the Conservation Commission and the Parks and Rec Programs for hike ledger just started. Was it 2020 that was launched? And so the interest in hiking Ledgers trails has been increasing, and so with that, I wanted to see how much of the parks were actually, you know, natural and native, and how much you could, you know, how much of the parks, when you looked at them, were you could see that it was existed like there was nobody there, and really, you know, Connecticut, Connecticut has a long history of, you know, just development, so not a lot of Connecticut is untouched. So, there's 98 plants on the Connecticut invasive species list. And invasive species are one of the top threats to biodiversity. So, it's a worthwhile thing to investigate, and it's worthwhile thing to know what's in our parks, so. Um, I set the goals of my research um, was to observe the occurrence, the spread and the clustering of invasive species. Um, so that we could draw conclusions and help predict patterns so that we can um. Maybe have an idea of what factors play into where they occur. Um, so I came up with a couple of questions to help guide, you know, my inquiry. Um. Alright, so now we can talk about what species I picked. I wasn't gonna pick all ninety-eight, that was impossible. Um, so. I chose the subjects based on, um, I came to the Conservation Commission in September and I also reached out to. Um, Avalonia, um, to get their advice on what parks were interesting. That I should focus on and what plants were interesting that I should focus on. And um, based on that, um, I chose. Uh, the seven species of multi-flora rose. Um, barberry, uh, autumn olive. Wisteria was a special request from someone from Avalonia. It's not listed as an invasive species. Um, but where I found it, it was definitely, um. You know, it, it created a monoculture, so. Um, I didn't find any at Whitehall though, so. Um, and then the last two were mugwort and um, of course Oriental bittersweet. So, uh, I chose those based on my initial walks. I could, those were ones that I identified seeing a lot of. Of course, the recommendations from the Conservation Commission and Avalonia. Um, and also um, characteristics that made them easily identifiable to me. Because. Uh, there were some species that. Maybe they had look-alikes that I wasn't comfortable, um. You know, identifying, but these seven species, I knew that there were certain things that, that, you know. Really made them state um, stand out. Um. So I conducted these surveys um, between October and November. And at first I was worried that it was going to be too close to um, the end of the season and I wasn't gonna be able to, to um, find them. But actually, it, it helped me out because the native species that have. Uh, the native look-alikes were actually already dying and had, were at the end of their um, active growth season. And so it, going at the end of fall made these invasive species easier to identify. So how I went about gathering, um, the research was that I broke the trails into um, intervals. I did that because on my initial walks, when I started just. Like tracking as I walked, it took me a really long time to just go a few feet. And so I wanted to make sure that I covered the entire parts with a um, with an even sample. So I took, I was interested in two types of data. The first um, data point was going to be um, just ticking off which ones I saw at each point. It, this one is called um, an absence data point. And so you're tracking which ones are present, which ones are absent. For the goal of seeing which parts of the trail were actually really healthy. Um, the second data point was I called the positive IDs. And so at each station, I took, um, every time I saw. Uh, uh, an invasive species, I took a data point for that, the location. Or the name of the species, um, I rated the severity of the invasion from mild to severe. Um, I also did an estimate of the distance off of the trail because um. I wanted to try to get like a spread of the information, um, but I knew that uh. It was going to, it, it was also gonna help identify once, you know, when you go out and use these maps to find. Um, the places where the mitigation needs to happen. That, you know, it might not be right there in front of you, it may be, you know. Um, a distance away from the trail, so I tried to keep. Um, you know, it, a roundabout estimate of how far away from the trail it was. Um, and then a direction because I wanted to remember which side of the trail. I found the, the, the plant on. And so I, you know, those positive IDs, sometimes. There were a lot of points, a lot of data points at some of those intervals, so. Once I took the data back into the GIS, I had to normalize the data so that um. Uh, to make up for the. Um. The inaccuracy in the GPS are, uh, the GPS system, um, because. Unless you get really expensive GIS sys- or uh, not GIS, um, GPS systems. Um, you know, your phone. Um, a, a device, a GPS, a handheld GPS device is not going to have um, an accuracy of more than. Like ten meters. Um, you, you could spend a little bit more and get a little bit better accuracy, but um, so I had, there was a little bit of. Um, inaccuracy built into the data gathering, so I wanted to normalize it. So I snapped them to the um, station points. And then I could use those values to run summary statistics and other, other things, so. Um, now, for the fun stuff, the results. Um, here is an overview of the maps that I created for um, for Whitehall. Um, on the left, you can see the, all the individual data points that I took. For the positive IDs. Um. And there, each dot has a color for uh, what species it is. And then on the left, or I'm sorry, on the right, um, the data is aggregated. So that there's a bigger um, point for how many more. Um, positively identified plants there were in that area. And so, um, you can kind of see, you know, at the very beginning, there's a lot of multi-flora rose. And then you get into some Oriental bittersweet, more multi-flora rose and then um. There's a whole bunch of autumn olive. Um, and so there's different parts of the trail that have a bigger problem with different species. So. Um. Here's some, here's a, some charts from the. The number of points I got back. Um. I gathered more points for Oriental bittersweet than any other plant. Um, I made eighty-two observations, um, but multi-flora rose wasn't far behind with seventy-two points. So, um, the bottom chart is a comparison of the mean severity. So that attribute that I took of like ha- you know, how big was, or how bad was the um. The invasion. Uh, from one to, one, two or three. Um, and I averaged those for each plant and Oriental bittersweet was. Again, the most severely um, invaded plant as well. So not just mo- the most common, but also caused the most damage. Alright, uh, so. One of the things I was interested in was whether there was a cluster of invasives. Um, so there were spots where there were um, more plants than others. And. Um, so there, there were, I found that there were clusters of invasives. Um. Let's see. So on the. On the left, um. I need to move my, okay. Um. On the left are all the positive observations aggregated and then um. On the right, they're um, aggregated grouped by severity. So you can see there are some parts that are way more severe than others as well. Um. One of the things I was interested in was um, whether. Um, the severity or, you know, the presence and the severity was affected by how closely we're to residential parcels or roads. Um, and so graphing the data, I, I saw a little bit of a relationship. But not enough to say like, yes. Um, so. You know, a little inconclusive. Um. Okay, and then so. On the left, there, the graphs are divided by the three parks that um. That I surveyed and then on the right, it's all of the parks together. Okay, and then. Uh, how I graphed, how I created the data to, to compare the distance to the parcel boundaries. Was that I used the graphing technique of actually measuring from the points to the closest boundary. Um, and then, so on the left, you can see those are the, uh, sorry, the absence. Um. The absence points to the closest um, boundary. And on the right, there, the positive IDs to the closest boundary. Um, so I don't have a map for this one. I was interested in whether there were um, like geological aspects to um. Where, where the invasive species occurred. Because what I was wondering was, um, since some of these spread by seed. Whether rain or gravity pulls those seeds downhill and whether I would find more at the bottom of the slope. But um, I did not find any significant relationship in any of my data. To be able to say there was any relate, you know, relationship between slope aspect. Um, or elevation, so. Um. How you can access this information will, is that I will publish a web map and you can, it's free to access. Uh, for anyone, you can look at it, you can zoom in, you can click on things, um, I'll make that available to you. Um, and then, so the future, where do we go from here? Um. So hopefully this helps you in developing a mitigation strategy. Um, I am not an expert in biology or ecology, so um. I can't give you advice on that, but hopefully the information, the location information will help those experts. Um. If you consult them, it'll help, help them kind of. Um, create a mitigation strategy for you. Um, the strongest trend that I found was the clustering so that um. I do think it's, it's important to target bad areas and, and good areas and. And make sure that you kind of identify those areas as separate. Um. And then. Sorry, um. And then further research from here. Um, I think more data will show more patterns, so training volunteers. Um, in a data collection system, um, it doesn't have to be the one that I used. Um, it can be any of the free ones out there, as long as you have the ability to get the data from wherever it's, it's collected. Um. One of the problems that I had, or one of the, one of the limitations to the, my data collection. Was that I stayed on the trail because I didn't want to go, you know, traipsing through any, you know, sensitive habitats or anything. So I stayed on the trail, so if there are trusted volunteers that can go off trail and kind of fill in. Um, those spaces in between, that could be helpful. Um, and then. When I set out to do this project, my ultimate goal was to um, use the data points to also um, to connect with. Um, aerial photography, but I didn't get that far. And so I would love to be able to do that in the future and um, hobby drones are really accessible. Um, I have one, but um, it doesn't have any really cool sensors that the professionals can use like. Um, infrared um, or radar, those are really, really expensive, um, but. Um, even just taking pictures um, on a regular basis of different places um, could help. Kind of track if they're spreading, if the mitigation strategy is working. Um, and it saves a lot of walking, you can do it really quickly, so. Um. And that is all, unless um, you are interested in me also sharing the web map. But um, I can also take, I can all just, just take questions.
Well. Yes, I think we'd be very interested in the uh, the web, the, the maps and stuff like that, you know. And actually the entire presentation could.
Share that.
Alrighty.
Um.
I, I think this, I think this would go very well with. You know.
Once it loads.
Mr. Morelli?
Yes.
Could she send this to Roxanne and then Roxanne could send it to all the Conservation Committee members?
Yes, could you?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
I can do that. Um. So. I don't know, can you still see my screen?
Yes.
Is this, is it still on the? Is it still on the PowerPoint?
No, it's on some maps.
Oh, okay, so this is just my data on the map, um, on the web app, so. Um. So I can have, you know, I can set up some clustering to, you can see there's hotspots. Um. And. Uh. I don't know, I had this whole spiel and now. Um, I don't know.
She may be better off sending it to Christine, since Roxanne doesn't do the Conservation Commission. To keep it, you know, within the, uh, within house.
Alright, Jessica, to Christine then instead, would that be alright, Naomi?
Yes, yes.
I, I would need Christine's information, cause I'm not sure I know who that is.
Alright, I can send it to you, but it's also, it's Christina Holstetter, Holsters. And she's the Assistant to the Mayor.
Okay.
Jessica, she's the one who sent you the invite, so you have her email. Hmm. Yeah, I can send it to you, I can send it to you.
Yeah, okay.
I have it right off.
Um, did anyone have any questions for me?
No, but um, Ms. Cobb.
No, but Ms. Cobb, I think this was a great presentation. Thank you so much. It looks like it was a ton of work. And it's very beneficial to our town, so thank you very much for all your effort and your hard work.
Oh, thanks, yeah, I mean hiking's fun.
Now, this could become, this could be very, very useful. This is gonna become very useful, especially with some of the other plans we have and with the management plan for the park, which we're gonna come up with and develop. This will become extremely useful. Again, I thank you.
Alright, no problem. Alright, I will stop sharing my screen now. Thank you so much. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Is there any more informational items? Alberta?
Yes.
I suppose on the informational items, you had, I guess, some budget figures?
I don't have them right in front of me, but suppose I get them.
I think you sent them to me. What I can do is I can send them out to all the commission members.
Okay. When I get, do you want me to do that?
Yeah, that'd be fine.
Because Christine usually sends them and I can forward them.
Okay, that'd be fine. And for these ones here, I'll take care of this, this batch this time.
I'm afraid if I try and go to the other screen, I'm gonna lose the program. Sorry.
Alrighty, under old business, was there any property walks? No? Alrighty. The Whitehall Environmental Assessment Plan. I guess what's her name? It was here last?
Maggie.
Maggie. I guess she walked it. And she's been up there and is to, did a survey of it. I, I was expecting, I thought we might hear something from her this evening, but I guess not. Again, I know that's been done. She's walked it. I think she's gonna be coming up with a proposal for us.
There was a great article in the paper about Whitehall when she walked it.
Right.
By Fagan.
Yep, he called me and spoke with me.
It was very informative.
Alrighty, so that's, I guess we're just waiting to see her, to get back to us. You know, with a proposal for that. The Open Spaces Acquisition Plan. I sent everybody a revised copy of it. Do they get it?
Yes.
Comments, debates, ideas? Do we like it? Do we adopt it? Do we like to study a little bit more before we make a decision as to whether that's a final draft or not? Do you want me to elaborate on it more?
Keep asking questions, Mike.
I keep asking until I get an answer to one of them.
That's it. I thought it was quite good, Mike.
Yeah, I thought it read, I thought it read very well, too.
Yes.
Alrighty. Alrighty, let me get it in a little bit clearer format and everything else like that. I'll put it on the agenda for next week, next month, excuse me. We, we can adopt it. Or not. The Open Spaces Management Plan. I've begun to work on that using Glacial Park as the example, a draft, kind of a format that we'll use for the others. I based it kind of on kind of the format that Avalonia uses. It's not gonna be exactly like Avalonia's, I think it's a little bit more detailed as necessary for us. But yes, so I've started working on that, and hopefully I'll get a kind of a draft out to everybody, this little bit more research on some things that I have to do. But that should be coming up soon. Alrighty, the
Mike, I'm trying to take notes for the minute. What was the last thing you said that you'll be sending us soon?
It would be the Open Spaces Management Plan.
Okay.
The equipment we purchased to help maintain the trails. Still the supply chain. I'm still waiting to hear from the suppliers for the, from the show up there. They're not here yet. So we're still listening to that. And the next item would be the Tri-Town Trail Greenway. Dave, you got any updates on that?
Well, yes, as you know, I've been out of town for the past month or so. But before I left, we had the application there before the Town Council Land Use Committee. And also, I had spoken to Roxanne about if it did happen to pass the council, she would follow up on it and make sure that it got forwarded to Lower Genella as our application, and she did that during the time that I was away. And apparently, the Town Council, along with the mayor, attached recommendation letters to it. And so it's, the application is now into the state as a greenway a greenway application, and we were waiting to see what happens now, whether the state will approve it or not.
Alright, good, good. Yeah, I was following it along its path also. Can you share anything with the Tri-Town Trail receiving a grant from the state?
Yes, they did, they did receive a grant to continue the work on the trail. And part of that, of course, is the parking lot that would be adjacent to the trail. In addition to that, we're going to be working on the historic sites that the trail passes through, getting some signage there and improving those areas. And then we're going to be attempting to acquire more easements for the trail to continue further southward into Grand.
Well, did the Tri-Town Trail, were they looking forward to giving a presentation to the Conservation Commission?
Not right away. I think eventually they would like to do that, but
Okay.
this is not in the cards right now.
Alrighty, alrighty. Well, when they're ready and they'd like to. Please invite them, invite them. Is there any other old business coming for the commission? New business? There is no new business. Like to make a motion for German then? Got a second? Dave seconded it. All in favor of journey? Say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Germany at seven twenty-eight.
Fast.
I know.
Bye, everyone. Have a good night.
Mike?
Yeah.
I brought the minutes. I'm, I'm, first time doing it, so I'm not, I just, not really great. So I'll just send you what I, what I typed, and then if you can then send that to
Christina.
You know, and maybe you can add or remove stuff to the document, because it's very, it's, it's very draft.
That's fine. That'll be fine.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome.